Turn the television on, Kaz.
Okay, start over. Call order. Fledgling allegiance, please.
Fledgling allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Tonight is the April 7th Township Hillsborough Public Planning Board Meeting. Planning Board, excuse me. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Here.
Mr. Conner?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hestag?
Here.
Ms. Beckarina?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Here.
Mayor Delcor?
Here.
Chairman Lapad?
Here.
The record reflect Mr. Chairman, Ms. Forrest is here.
Thank you. We'll give her a minute to sit down. Next order of business would be the deposition of minutes dated February 25th, 2016, which you should have in your packet.
All members present, Mr. Chairman, are eligible except Mr. Conner.
Okay. We have a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Here, yes.
Thank you.
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Ms. Beckarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Chairman Lapad?
Yes. Next would be the March 10th, 2016 minutes, which are also in your packet.
All members present are eligible, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Ms. Beckarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Chairman Lapad?
Yes. Next would be a deposition of resolution, 751 Highway 206 Associates LLC, File 15 PB13SRV, application known as Cornerstone Professional Center, 751 Highway 206 Associates LLC, which is in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members of the board are Mr. Wagner, Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli, Mr. Conner, and the mayor.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
And Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next would be special committee reports.
No.
None today?
Planning Board Business.
Planning Board Business.
I'm sorry, I missed that one. Kismic Associates File 14 PB21MSR, time of decision extension through September 8th, 2016. We have a motion?
Is the buyer being extended? Any commentary?
Anything?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Do we have a section on this?
Nothing yet.
We got a motion, but no?
We have a motion, but not a second.
Why don't we get a second first before Mr. O'Grady?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Maruli.
Just to update the board, this is the United Rentall.
Indicate who you.
My name is Michael O'Grodnick. I'm an attorney at Moro Savo, Cameron Grant and Shawk. I represent the applicant in this matter, Kismic Associates, United Rentall site. This and other areas along 206 were asking for some access onto a turnaround that's not yet built. DEP is just not moving on any of these applications. They, unlike boards, they have no time limits, so we've been asking and asking and asking for about a year now to allow United Rentall to get onto that turnaround directly, and they have not responded. I spoke with Mr. Hybel, and we expect something this summer from them, but we do request another extension because we're not going to move forward with the application until the DOT approval. Thank you.
Hard to believe that they would drag their feet something. Hell's probably knows nothing about that. All right. So we have a motion and a second, so we have a roll call.
Yes, Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Ms. Beckarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
And Chairman Lapad?
Yes. Okay, now we're at committee reports. Seeing none. Any business from the floor today? Not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Motion closed.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so next would be consideration of ordinances, which we have none. And now we're at the public hearing section, so the first up will be the Country Classics Phase 4A, File 07 PB20MJF, 2016 Extension Request, Block 205.50, formerly Block 205, Lot 2832, 32.02, 33.01, Amsterdam Drive, Murphy Drive Extension, and Gallagher, Galligen Drive, excuse me, Extension. Applicant requesting a two-year extension of time for preliminary and final major subdivision. Resolution of approval dated January 17th, 2008, on property in the RA Residential and Agricultural District. As a matter of order, the board, I would have to ask permission to recuse myself of this matter and turn the meeting over to the co-chair, vice chair, at this time.
Thank you. Again, my name is Mike O'Grodnick. I'm an attorney at Moro Savo, Cameron Grant and Shawk in Somerville, and I represent the applicant in this matter, Country Classics 4 LLC. With me tonight, I have Todd Van Cleef, who's a principal of the entity, as well as Mike Ford from Van Cleef Engineering. He's our professional engineer. We're seeking a two-year extension for, just for Phase 4A for this project. Phase 4A of this project was approved in 2008 and as permitted under the Permit Extension Act to delay any development until June 30th of 2016. We're seeking an extension to June 30th, 2018, and I have my client here to testify as to the rationale. I've also submitted a legal memorandum with an explanation dated today at the request of the board, so at this time, I'd like to swear in Mr. Van Cleef and allow him to testify as to the rationale for a granting of an extension of time request, which is governed under NJS 40:55D-52.
I swear you in, raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and the evidence of the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, state your name, please.
Todd Van Cleef.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Phase 4A is the final phase of Country Classics. We are presently building, finishing out Phase 4C, and we are developing Phase 4D. Our request pretty much centers around the fact that since 2008, we went through the recession, which really cut down on our absorption and our number of sales. All off-site improvements have been completed, all, any obligations on our part for the entire Country Classics has, have been completed. It's a timing issue that brings us here tonight. That's pretty much it.
Could you explain to the board, in the other phases of 4, where we are with the status of the available lots versus the remaining lots? Let's start, I understand, is it correct that Phase 4B is built out and completed?
Correct.
And for Phase 4D, or let's start with 4C. How many homes have closed title and how many are still for sale?
Michael, maybe Todd use the...
There are about six lots left in Phase 4C. In Phase 4D, there was a total of 28, I'm sorry, 22 lots that are remaining, so in total, we have approximately 28 lots left. Based on our absorption, we really don't see ourselves through those 28 lots into the very end of this year, possibly early next year. Thus, the request to delay 4A.
My understanding, Mr. Van Cleef, is that approximately 694 of the 846 lots, as approved by this major subdivision, have been completed, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's approximately 87% of the development complete, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. We have no further questions for the witness.
Is there any input from our professionals? Questions from the board? Anyone in the public has any questions for this witness? Seeing none.
Any other witnesses, Mr. O'Grady?
No, Mr. Bernstein. Unless the board has any questions of the engineer, we don't have any further testimony.
Anything else from the board? No?
For the purpose of the board's edification, the board has the right to grant a one-year extinction or a two-year extinction under the statute. The applicant is asking for two.
Anything subsequent to that, after that period of time?
No.
That's the limit?
This is...
That's it?
Unless they want to come back for another application and relive this joy that some of us lived through the last time.
I had a lot more hair back then.
Yeah.
Didn't we all?
As did I.
It's true. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we grant a two-year extension for Phase 4A, File 07 PB20NJF.
I'll second it.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Ms. Beckarina?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
And Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Okay, we'll turn the meeting back over to our chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Next order of business would be the public hearing for the Glengarry GGR E Company, File 15 PB04MR, Block 182 Lots 10, 11, 12, 45, and 46, 95 Hamilton Road. Applicant seeking minor subdivision with waivers to reconfigure lot lines by merging all five lots totaling of 238.7 acres, and subdividing a lot in the southeastern corner to create one lot consisting of approximately 25.494 acres, proposed Lot 46, with remaining lot, proposed Lot 11, approximately 213.25 acres of remaining land on the property in the M Mining District. E.C. Review 0323-15 adjourned from 7/9/15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, John Marmorow.
You can sit down near them. Have a seat. Speaking of the mic.
I understand that we're all governed by the man sitting behind you.
Man with the camera. Very good. Perfect.
Well, thank you, anyway. John Marmorow for the applicant this evening. I think you, Mr. Chairman, have outlined the application. I'm sure the site is well-known to you as the former New Jersey Shale.
You can just speak a little more. Yeah, there you go.
Sorry, how about that? Okay.
Better.
And we have completed the remediation. Our final report was filed with the DEP actually in November of 2014, so we are now proceeding, hopefully to be out of Hillsborough Township. We're not in the development business. We hope to sell the property to a developer, but tonight, that, those are all matters for subsequent applications by others. As I said, we're not developers. So tonight, what I'd like to do, we are just addressing lot lines, and I brought with me our civil engineer, Bob Zaderbaum, who can go through the two lots we hope to create. We're merging a couple, as you said, and creating another one, and we'd like to just show that to you. And again, the ultimate development of the parcels would be for another day and another applicant.
Okay. We need to swear in your witness, please.
Raise your right hand, please, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and the evidence of the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you, state your name, W.O.S.
Robert Zaderbaum, CBD.
ERBAUM.
Thank you.
And your address?
BL Box 5074, Clinton, New Jersey. You'll make that through.
If you could, just briefly, your qualifications.
Your credentials.
I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have been in business since 1979. I've been licensed, I should say. I've been before this board in the past, several applications. I've been before most of the boards in Hunterdon County, some in Somerset County.
We'll accept your qualifications, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Zaderbaum, would you perhaps situate the site for the board and then explain what it is, the limited amount we hope to accomplish this evening?
Are you going to mark this, Mr. Marmorow?
I believe that, has that been filed? We can mark this as a one, but just to be...
This is part of the plans that were filed with the board, but for the record, it is sheet.
Sheet 4 of 9 entitled Minor Subdivision Overall for GGR E Company, Block 182, Lots
10, 11, 12, 45, and 46. And as the chairman has essentially already told the board, but I'll kind of repeat what he said, the purpose of the application is to combine the five existing lots, which total 238.744 acres, and once those lots are put together, we want to create two lots, a Lot, Close Lot 46, which will be 25.494 acres, and the remaining lands of the 213.25 acres. The application is that simple. The properties in the mining district does not have any zone requirement, so obviously we are meeting the requirements of that zone. As our attorney has stated, there is no proposed development at this time, and there will not be any proposed development as part of this applicant, so we're here simply to merge five lots and turn it to two.
Did you have an opportunity to review Mr. Maskey's review letter?
Yes, I did.
Do you have any comments on that?
Well, we could certainly increase the size of Lot 46 to get additional lot width. However, with our proposal of trying to maintain the majority of the property that could actually be developed, it seems to me that it's anti-productive because it doesn't seem to serve any purpose. I do not believe this lot will ever be anticipated for any kind of development. If anything ever happens on a lot, it's going to be passive development, I would think, at best, but this board, or whatever board will be sitting at that time, will have their shot at any application that may come in to develop that property, and at that time, you could determine whether a variance is needed and whether you want to grant it. But I honestly don't see an application coming in before the board for that lot. But if it's something that drastically upsets the board, you know, we can add the additional acreage if you'd like.
Do you feel that the 150 feet that you're proposing will give you adequate space for a access driveway? As you come over the, overpass over the tracks, obviously, is a bit of a blind spot. Do you think that a driveway could be far enough away from the overpass from the bridge so that traffic coming over the top would have enough time to see anybody exiting or accessing the site?
We didn't do any kind of detailed analysis as to access, because again, there were no plans whatsoever to develop that property. I don't think adding even another 50 or 100 foot to that is going to really change the conditions of access to that property, either for or against. I would think that if there is going to be development of the property, it probably would come from some access from the lands remaining. But again, you know, I said, because there's no proposals at this time on what is proposed for either lot, I don't know. So, to answer your question, we really didn't analyze it drastically. Thank you.
Can you, can you explain to me why you chose to divide the lot like you did as, what's this small little piece created from such a large piece, instead of making it a little larger, to make it, you know, along all of Hamilton Road and cutting it in half? It seems that you're just taking a piece of property and throwing it out in the wind.
Well, what's taking place is that there may be further subdivisions, who knows? I don't know what the ultimate development of this will be. Would have to be something that the town agrees on because it's zoned for mining, and it's obviously an obsolete mining site since it's been fully mined and reclaimed. So the goal was to maximize the developable area, and that is really the mother tract, which is 213 acres. So the other, the remaining lot would...
Counsel, with all due respect, is there someone else? I'd rather you not testify as to the response on this.
Well, Mr. Zaderbaum would have to address that.
Again, from a developable standpoint, as has just been stated, we attempted to maximize the lands remaining, which is the portion of the property which could possibly be redeveloped into the future for some use. We've essentially taken off the portion of the property. We don't feel it's developable, which is why I essentially said that if anything happened with Lot 46 in the future, I would think it's simply going to be a passive development if anything occurs, but I, it certainly isn't conducive to structures.
I guess in reference, I have a question in reference to the chairman's question, then if you're trying to move a little piece off of it, and you have all this other, why would you do that and not give it a little bit more so they're both marketable potentially? I don't understand.
Or not even subdivide at all and just leave it all one contiguous lot?
I don't understand why that would be. Can you explain that? Well, I, if I could, if I may, I...
As long as you don't testify.
Well, I wasn't actually, you know, these issues weren't raised in the reports, or we thought we were only discussing lot lines.
Okay. Well, just a question.
Yeah, no, I understand the question, and I'll answer.
Well, but as the planner, didn't he establish the lot lines?
What's that? Then who did?
Then who did?
The lot lines were generally outlined by the LSRP as part of the remediation. Originally, and I think there was an application before my, before I was involved in this, that came before and then was pulled back, the LSRP was under some understanding that that portion of the property, because it was never part of the quote-unquote "industrial establishment," that's a term of art. We have a thing called the Industrial Site Recovery Act, ISRA. You've probably heard of it. This was an ISRA site, and that portion of the property on the other side of the stream there was not considered part of the industrial establishment. So he was under the impression it had to be subdivided. The DEP ultimately did not require it to be subdivided, and as a matter of fact, the predecessor statute of ISRA was ECRAs, and this site went through an ECRAs review in 1988. It was triggered when Glengarry bought the property from New Jersey Shale. And that, the No Further Action Letter, which was submitted to the town, we went before the Environmental Commission, and they wanted all the backup from back then, and that was all submitted, including the negative declaration at the conclusion, when the remediation was completed in 1992. It indicated that that portion was not part of the industrial establishment. However, you know, the LSRP assumed that it was, and that's why it was originally drawn in that area.
So can I summarize that, maybe, to say that you cut the lot lines to maximize the clean property and segregate out the one that's subject to environmental cleanup?
No. No, it's not subject to environmental cleanup. That's the whole point. The DEP did not require... And why segregate it off, I guess, is the question? Right. That portion was, well, that portion of the property was former, the adjacent PSE&G site was formerly owned by Hillsborough Township back in the 60s, I think, into the early 70s. I can get you all those dates if you really, I don't think you need them, but I have them if you want to get into any of those.
That's okay. Close enough.
All right. Yeah, it was in the 60s and into the early 70s, and it was operated as a landfill. The PSE&G site, it migrated on to that portion of the, of this site, and then it was ultimately closed together, the entire, the entire landfill.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you just point out the PSE&G land on there?
It's...
Basically, you're talking really, the land is just considered here.
Right, and it was formerly owned, it was formerly, like I said, it was formerly owned by the township itself. And when it was closed, at one point, there were, the DEP wanted groundwater monitoring, and that was all done in the 90s, and as a matter of fact, the negative declaration that I just mentioned, that mentioned that the groundwater wells should be sealed. And those groundwater monitoring results were actually submitted as part of the submission with the site evaluation, they were called SESs back then, and that the groundwater results were submitted to the DEP back then. And all those results, all the test results from the groundwater monitoring were part of that submission and also provided to the town last spring, when the Environmental Commission requested it. So that was, that, in other words, that's considered a closed landfill, and nothing, no remediation is required on that portion. The remediation that was required was essentially on the other side of that, and that was the remediation that I mentioned before under ECRAs, the 19, that was the 1998 trigger that ultimately concluded in 92 with the negative declaration, 1990, I'm sorry, it was, the trigger was in 1988, and the negative declaration was issued by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection in July of 1990. You can trigger ISRA now, that ECRAs was the predecessor. You can trigger ISRA another way, and that is when you cease operations. The trigger in 88 was because Glengarry bought the property. That's its one trigger. In 19, in 2008, I'm sorry, 2008, Glengarry ceased operations there, and that was the second ISRA trigger, and that's the remediation that has taken all this time to complete. But it was a thorough remediation, it's not restricted on that side there. There's no, sometimes it's called a restricted remediation where residential is not permitted. This was cleaned up to unrestricted standards, and the final, the final report, which the township also was copied on, was filed by our LSRP with the DEP back in November of 2014.
So if it's clean to an unrestricted status, why is the subdivision lot cut that way?
Clean to an unrestricted status is the industrial establishment property, not that portion which was considered a closed landfill. So that's, I'm confused. So that's not clean? It's an un, it's a closed landfill? Because I'm hearing unrestricted, and I'm not sure if I'm following. The remediation... Can you point on the map? I need to see on the map, the little triangle that you want to break off here tonight. What is the status of that property?
This is, this is the closed township landfill.
Is that unrestricted?
But if you have a property that size and a developer want to develop, he could just leave that alone and not develop on it. So why, again, back to the original question is, why segregate this piece off instead of just having one contiguous lot to sell?
Because a developer doesn't want to own it.
There we go.
The developer does not want to own that.
Now, now we got to the crux of the matter.
Yeah, now we know.
It's not the fact that it-
You want to carve off a piece that nobody wants and just like you had said, maybe somebody will passively do something with it.
Right. I, I mean, what that is, who knows? Solar, a, a solar farm, who knows? I mean, there, there's superficial uses that can be made of-
I think it needs to stay the same. I don't know.
Or it can stay, it can stay the way it is. I don't know. The, the, you know, that, that is something that ultimately someone will have to just, if there's an idea for development, it would be, it would be, have, have to be discussed with you. It would have to be discussed with, really, the mayor.
But that's only if we approve to carve it out, correct?
Well, the development of anything in this area, because it's zoned for mining, so really, really, the development of the property, and it can't be mined anymore because it's-
No, I, I understand. I just, I'm not-
Assuming that we approve this plan is what he was saying.
Yeah. If, if the plan, if the plan is approved, whatever development is on either, if, if there's some sort of creative superficial, superficial development or somebody wants to undertake a more substantial development on, on that portion, but that, that's for a later date. I mean, we're, we're, we're trying to do right now is, is create a develop, you know, the, the, out of the, what was the former industrial establishment that the DEP has basically, you have on record is clean to unrestricted standards. That's a piece, you know, a developer would, would want. But the other piece is, is obviously, excuse me, very questionable.
Mr. White, anything that I could add?
I have one question. I keep hearing about the unrestricted use, and I know you submitted to DEP with this LSRP program. They don't review every application. They typically look at thirty percent of them or so. Did the DEP actually look at this application? Because there's a number of areas of concerns that no remediation was done. There was an oil road, you know, oil and chip road that's there, and a couple of other areas that were pointed out, but no remediation was done to address them. So did DEP actually physically sign off on this?
No, they don't. They don't anymore. The, the D, well-
They do review at least a third of your submissions.
Yeah.
And when they find problems, they'll go back to the rest of your submissions.
Right. The, the DEP was, was involved because, like I said, originally the LSRP thought the subdivision was required. They went back to the DP, DEP and discussed it. The DEP said then it was not. So they, but they have had it since November of two thousand and fourteen, but they knew it was coming. They will not issue a letter, as you know. They won't issue a letter saying they reviewed it, that they didn't review it, that they're happy with it, that they're not happy with it. They just won't do that. But we, we're very comfortable that, that, you know, it's been on file for a year and a half and, and there's been no comment from the DEP.
And that's based on the current zoned use of mining? So should it have come back to be, and asked the board to rezon that area as residential? There's no issues?
No, it's been clean to unrestricted standards.
I don't know if I'd agree with that.
That, that's the, and, and that's been, I mean, I, I apologize. I did not bring the LSRP. I didn't think we were getting into this because these issues weren't raised in the report. But the, the, that, that is in the final remedial actual, remedial action outcome report that was filed in November of two thousand and fourteen, and copies of which were, in fact, we provided twenty-five copies, I believe, to the town back then. And, and the LSRP is standing behind that. It's clean to unrestricted standards.
I guess personally I'd like to hear from the LSRP to understand what they've, what's been done.
What hasn't been done.
What hasn't been done.
Okay.
What's the lot number on that triangle, the one that's in question?
I think it's forty-six.
What we're proposing is forty-six.
Lot forty-six.
That's Lot forty-six.
Right.
Since you guys are farther away, here's the map.
Yeah, right.
Counselor, anything?
Here's my concern. Other than I've had conversations with this board on this issue before this evening's meeting, as the board is aware. The applicant is in for what is ostensibly a subdivision. You can approve the subdivision or deny the subdivision. The issue of the environmental status of the property in and of itself is not an issue before this board at this time because there is no development on the site other than what is currently there, which is a non-existent mining operation. If and when, and that is a key phrase, if and when, the committee were to consider rezoning the property. And if and when they granted a rezoning, if they ever granted a rezoning, the board, this one or the zoning board, considered an application therein. Then the issue of the environmental status, and I would agree with Bill in terms of whether or not it's at the appropriate standards, is going to be whoever comes in and says, "Look, I want to do X." And the answer is, prove to us that you can do X on this site based on the prior use of the site. And at that point, we will have the discussions of the LSRP decision, the DEP award. I am not suggesting the board cannot ask the applicant to potentially bring the LSRP, but I will indicate to the board that the restricted or unrestricted concept of the property or where the applicant drew the line or didn't draw the line on environmental is not necessarily an issue currently before this board. You can turn down the subdivision application. You're going to have to have a basis to do so. And I would anticipate that based on that, that Mr. Marmore's client will think long and hard as to whether or not they're going to contest the denial of the subdivision line, which is always a benefit to me. Which we deeply appreciate. All I'm suggesting to the board is if you want the LSRP, you can. But ultimately, the decision of granting or denying the application is whether it is conforming or not conforming to the code and to the municipal land use law. And the report you have from Mr. Maskey, which is a reported issue here, indicates that while he would like to see an extra, what, forty-six feet, I believe, added to the property, that the property in and of itself by the subdivision conforms.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Bill? So essentially, we have an opportunity here to approve the subdivision as requested or deny.
Or ask for-
Or ask for a redraw, I guess, or come back again. Any other discussion? Like thoughts?
I think before you do, you might want to open to the public.
Oh, let's see. Is there public here? I'll make a motion, open to public, based on this test. Second? On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now open this portion to public on any comments or questions to this witness. Seeing none.
So I will- One more item for the board certification. Time of decision rule. I believe, and Mr. Maskey is going to check, that tomorrow-
I believe you granted an extension until tomorrow on the time of decision. Is that correct?
Right, right, right.
So we would have to request another extension of time.
If you want to go beyond today.
So motion to close, public?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, um-
April thirtieth?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Correction, the, the time of decision runs out April thirtieth.
So you have two more weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I assume if the board wants us to come back, we-
Why would the board know that they would have to ask for an extension beyond unless you wanted to hold it in one of the other two meetings in this month?
So we don't have to prove an extension unless we have to, is what you're saying? Thoughts from the board? I will, I will call on the record saying is that though it, if we're just deciding on landlines, as, as the councilor suggested, I, I know this piece of property and that where that entrance is seems to be not a very conducive area for safety egress or traffic because you're coming over that bridge and down that hill. And anyone trying to come out of that is basically going to be blind. So that would essentially almost make that, that property unusable with an access safely on Hamilton Road. Whether they're able to grant an easement or an access off the other property, that is yet to be determined. But as now, I, I think that it's really not a safe, safe situation coming in off that, that lot, off of Hamilton Road.
Well, if that's the sentiment of the board, rather than take a denial and deal with this, I'd like-
Unless, that's just my, that's my, only because I, I live and drive that road every day and been up that road probably three times a day for the last thirty years and know that road pretty well. And in fact, I know the, when that construction was being done, I saw what was going on. I'm like, what are they putting there? I thought maybe it was an entrance for, access for the utilities, for trucks to get into access. But really, if you're going to make that into a usable piece of property and have public go in and out of that, I, I, in my opinion, I think that that needs to be moved further down. But that's just my opinion.
Well, if, if I could then, and, and Mr. Bernstein, I understand you'd like to move this, but I do not-
No, I don't have one way. I'm advising the board and indicating what the parameters are. If the board want, and I think what the chair has sort of indicated is his own feeling. And I'm not looking to cut you off, Mr. Marmore, but I think you might want to hear what else-
Well, I do, I do want to hear.
Whatever the members of the board have to say, because it may be more than the chair's thoughts.
Because I, I, I mean, in terms of the chairman's comments, to the extent they may be shared by others, obviously I have a proof issue on my end in not having a traffic expert address that. So I would at least like an adjournment to, to address that, assuming others are of like mind. But I, I would like to hear from, from others so that I don't come back and then waste your time. Okay?
That's just, I thought I broke the ice and put it out there, anyone else saying it.
I would think with the, with, knowing that, that area as, as well, although having not driven it for thirty years is all, is, is, but I have driven it probably, you know, multiple, multiple times. And since you had made mention that it's going to be a passive or whoever might want it, why would we, you know, why would we not want to make it wider to try to increase potential availability or marketability than squeezing it? Because now if it's less desirable, why would we want to make it? If it's stamped that way, why not increase it? Why not try to make it a little bit more desirable? Well, by Mr. Maskey's idea of maybe increasing it. So maybe there is a little bit more room to, to get in there. I don't know, forty feet or fifty feet by you. But I know when you come flying over the top of that bridge, and the kids do that, play Dukes of Hazzard, and the cops sit right down there, it's a challenge. You get some ice, you're, you know, showing, you know, how many people wound up in, in the ditch. So if you're looking at an area that's less marketable or less desirable, why not try to increase that? And maybe it helps with the marketability. So maybe we need to go back and have the traffic people come back and take a look at it and say, does it conform to what's there? I, I understand that bridge is due for replacement in a couple of years. So maybe that's something we need to take a look at because I'm sure it's not going to be as short as it is. It'll probably be much wider. So maybe we need to-
I know that the county in, the county's only comment was they wanted a bridge easement. So maybe, maybe that's why. I'm not exactly sure what the county's plans are, but-
Well, I, I'm not sure either, but I had heard that that was going to be replaced in two years and closed. And if it's like anything what they've done where the bypass is, it's a much longer entrance and exit, certainly than where it is now, because now it's kind of up square and then down. So I'm sure it doesn't conform to what's currently out there. Would probably be much longer and a smoother gradual. So I think maybe, with the chairman said, I think maybe we need to take a look at that.
Okay.
Just a general comment. It just seems that in creating this lot, you know, when we have these applications, we're looking for, you know, best case scenario of what to do with all the lots that are created in an application, not to effectively limit the use and sort of, for lack of a better term, write off a lot. And it just doesn't sit well. I'm not comfortable with that per se. And that's just a general, just general comment. You know, it's my, you know, reluctant to be in favor of it because it seems that we're just sectioning off a lot, making it less useful.
Because my comment is, you know, if I were to take a crystal ball and look forward into the future and kind of see what happens to this, you know, possibly unmarketable lot, and that crystal ball finding it somehow makes its way back to the township, if what you're saying, but you can't testify to it. But in this report, if it is truly a clean piece of property, then, you know, that's fine. I think from a planning perspective, I think is it not the greatest use or plan for that property to be a lot line that way? But from a legal perspective, you know, it is what it is. Anything else?
Well said. Okay. Counselor?
Well, I, I would then, I would request an adjournment to look at the access issue if there are any other comments. I mean, I'd like to at least, I don't want to, I don't want this to go down for failure of proofs because I didn't satisfactorily address access. What I'd like to do is hire a traffic engineer, have them talk to the county to see what exactly their plans are. And at least be able to come back and tell you and answer that, you know. It's my burden of proof to, to make sure you don't have an open question. So we'll put it to a vote when you have an open question about access. It's in proven on my part. So I would at least like to answer that part. I, I tend to, I, I do agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Bernstein that environmental issues are, are really there for another day when an actual use is identified and a project proposed to you.
Okay. So I guess at that point, if you ask for a motion to an extension?
Well, may I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman? I think Mr. Marmore was sort of asking the question, but I'll ask a little more. Other than the access traffic issue, is there any other proofs that the board is looking for from the applicant regarding this subdivision?
I think I stated yes.
You want the LSRP?
I'd like to understand what was done. Okay. So we'd ask for that and the, and the traffic study?
In particular, if it, if it has a bearing on how the lines are cut?
Anything else within that parameter? That sounds like what-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What we're requesting.
Mr. Marmore, how long do you think it'll take?
Well, I'd like to, I mean, a couple of weeks is going to take me. I gotta hire-
Well, that's fine. I guess the question is, I'm, for purposes of asking for the extension and scheduling you on another hearing, I think the issue is when you see-
You can do ninety days.
You want sixty days? Ninety days?
We can give him as much time as we're given.
If we could do, if we could do like the end of May, I'll scramble and if, if I need further extension, I can ask for it.
How about, how about we, the extension till the end of June and we'll get you on a June agenda?
How, how, what, what would be, what would be the meeting in June?
First and second Thursdays, which I don't have in front of me.
I got it. So it'd be June seventh?
Uh, no, it'd be June ninth.
I'm sorry, June ninth.
Second and ninth.
Second and ninth.
Probably the ninth. June ninth.
Okay. If we could carry to June ninth, then if I get it done beforehand, maybe I could possibly get on earlier.
And, and extension through June thirtieth?
Through June thirtieth.
There's to be no further notice.
So we have a motion to extend extensions through June thirtieth?
So moved.
Second.
Further notice. Second?
Well, that's a notice for decision to extend the time for making a decision to June thirtieth. I mean, that's the motion, the initial motion.
That's the motion.
The first motion.
First motion. Okay. And we have a second from Dr. Muller. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Cacarina.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Mullerly.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkhor.
Yes.
Chairman Bapah.
Yes.
The second motion, Mr. Chairman, is a motion to continue this application until June ninth, two thousand and sixteen without further notice.
So we have a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hesag.
Yes.
Mr. Beccarina.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Marulli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Chairman Mopan.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, thank you for your time.
We'll see you in June, hopefully we'll.
Hopefully we'll see you on June ninth and have your questions answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next, Marmor's would be a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're asking for an executive session regarding the Pearson Properties LLC matter under the guise of attorney-client privilege and litigation with the board, since there is a pending litigation.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll close for executive session.
I use my daughter's friendship.
Okay, we need a motion to come out of executive session and close it.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Let the record reflect, Mr. Chairman, that all members of the planning board present at the commencement of the executive session are present at the recommencement of the open session, as well as the board attorney, the board planner, the board engineer. There was a discussion relative to two aspects of the Pearson Properties application, which is currently in litigation. Part one was an update for the board as to the status of the litigation. One piece which has been brought against the planning board, one piece which has brought against the zoning board of adjustment. No formal action needs to be taken. The other piece of the puzzle is, is a discussion from attorney-client privilege point of view. If the board recalls, the board retain Norm Dotty as a noise expert on behalf of the board in regard to the application when issues were raised relative, and I think it's what Russell Acoustics LLC, regarding allegations made by the objector, Mr. Dotty's firm was retained. The original contract was a not-to-exceed four thousand dollar figure with him. The developer agreed on the record to pay that amount in order to provide for the services. Subsequent to the application being conducted, Mr. Dotty submitted a bill which was slightly more than two thousand in excess of the original amount of the not-to-exceed figure. Mr. Maskey, at the behest of myself and the chair, reached out for the applicant and asked whether or not they would in fact deposit an additional two thousand dollars into the escrow account in order to pay for same. Alex Fisher, the attorney for the applicant, has indicated they will. Have we gotten that in writing?
Yes.
Yeah, we received confirmation in writing. The board discussed the concept and the action that we're requesting being taken, Mr. Chair, is an authorization to increase the contract to a not-to-exceed figure six thousand dollars, provided that all monies relative to this contract be paid by the developer and the township and the board have no obligation to pay any and or all of the amount, the original or the amended, in question.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve a not-to-exceed or the six thousand dollar figure to be paid for out of the escrow and to not hold Township Hillsborough in any way responsible for those monies.
Or the board.
Or the board.
And if the money is not ultimately deposited, then he gets four.
He gets four thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, Mr. Pearson.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hesag.
Yes.
Mr. Beccarina.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Marulli.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Yes.
Mayor Delkor.
Yes.
Chairman Mopan.
Yes. Mr. Chair, I think there are no items on the agenda or currently on the agenda for either the April fourteenth or the April twenty-eighth business meeting, which would therefore allow the board to cancel both meetings.
All right, so we have canceled the April fourteenth and the April twenty-eighth meetings. We can just do as a affirmation? As a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we canceled, our next scheduled meeting will be May fifth, two thousand and sixteen. We'll now entertain any motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.